I will, I will go. Good evening. I'm going to open the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Monday, May 16th, 2022, to order. Can I get a motion to go into executive session?
I so moved.
No, Don's got it.
You're going to read the whole thing.
Actually, the whole thing, yes.
That's my pain.
I, I move to go into executive session out of the following four reasons. A, an executive session pursuant to general law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, in the matter of former town administrator Christopher Clark. B, pursuant to MGL, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss with respect to collective bargaining for all town unions, and the chair has determined that an open session would have a detrimental effect on the town's bargaining position. C, pursuant to general law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, and to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel. D, pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 216, to consider the purchase exchange, lease, or value of real estate if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town body, of the public body, and that we will return after the conclusion of the executive session.
Second.
Moved and seconded to go into executive session as read. Roll call vote. Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
Yeah. Let me try and see if this works.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm going to call the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Monday, May 16th, 2022, back to order. We started tonight's meeting in executive session for four topics. On A, was related to general law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, former town administrator. A vote was taken. Nothing will be announced tonight as this is pending, possible pending litigation, but no, but a vote was taken. The other one was, two were, to discuss collective bargaining for all town unions and non-union personnel. No votes were taken. And then the last was, consider purchase exchange lease of, of value of real property. Decisions were made, but we will not be announcing those decisions tonight. Would you please join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Public comment announcement. Good evening.
Good evening, Select Board. Nice, nice wording. Rather than selectmen, and I'm looking at Judy, Julie. Just, just two quick things. Ten years ago this summer-
Did you just state your name for the-
Oh, I'm sorry. Mark Keller here, West Howard. Ten years ago this summer, there was a young Irish J1 student here by the name of Padraig Shaler. He was hit by a car in Brewster, had traumatic brain injuries, and now the only way he can walk is with an exoskeleton. The reason I bring that up is, as you can see now, and I've seen it, J1 students are back, and young workers are back. I've seen them out in the road without helmets, without lights. I'm just asking if there's, and Jamie has told me there is a bike committee meeting tomorrow, but anything the town can do, the, the police department can do to both educate and inform these new workers to our town, to be careful in the roads. It's a good reason, as I've mentioned before, newsletter, to put it out to all the people that we have people on our roads at night. It's very dangerous. As an example of how dangerous it is, a telephone pole right near Brax Landing, and that guardrail was taken out Saturday night. So it's dangerous on our roads. Second quick thing, we had spoken about before short-term rentals. We said that there wasn't enough time last year to, to put that in effect. It had to go before town meeting, a bylaw change, attorney general. I just think it'd be a good idea for the town to get itself poised and ready to go, especially after the summer, if you find a need for it, so that we could do that for next summer. The reason I think it's a good idea is that it reduces the burden on the town and the police. When there are problems, the first call could go to the owner of that property. I had a family member who rented a place for one night this week, $500. There's businesses in our, in our villages. So, any questions?
Thank you, Mark. No questions tonight, since that's public comment announcement, but I will get that back on the agenda in a reasonable amount of time. Thank you. Chief?
Mr. Chairman, members of board, did come at chief of police. I just wanted to give the board a heads up, and if you want to agenda it for next Monday, I can come back and discuss it further, but the Cape Cod Regional SWAT team has requested use of the range on Depot Road for half a day a week from tomorrow, and it'll start about 11 o'clock in the morning and probably finish up no later than 4:00 PM. It's a very quick qualification for both pistol and rifle. So it, we have two officers on the team, so it is a benefit to our department, as well as all the departments in the region, that they be allowed to actually do this quick qualification. So I just, obviously, we'll be proactive with the people that we have on our contact list. We'll post it on our Facebook, and I had meant to send it to you last week via email in case you wanted to discuss it further, but that's, that's what I have. It's going to be a real quick day.
Thank you, chief.
What are those dates again, chief?
It's just May 24th, a week from tomorrow.
Because I'm in that general area, I get some negative comments each time they, they have guns there, so. And I do appreciate the, I would send also my neighborhood as well, to be sure they're aware.
Yeah, we'll be as proactive as, as possible, and it's going to be like a short day too. It's not like a, a multiple days in a row. It's just one half-day.
Thank you, chief.
Mr. Chair, if I may, to Mark's comment, in the, in the past, we've had some success on the biker, bikers and so on. To some extent, that, that has been driven by the business community, because they're the ones that hired the people, to the extent that they remind them to, you know, ride their bike against traffic, you know, with traffic to, and so we, somehow we need to, I know Cindy's listening as well, somehow we need to remind them to really help educate, especially the foreign J1 students, because they're not used to some of the same practices, and so that's vital.
Thank you, Larry. Cindy Williams, Executive Director of the Harwich Chamber. In the past, there's been a gentleman, Pastor Matt, in one of the local churches that's held dinners locally. Kevin Constanine, Deputy Chief Constanine, and I have done it. This year, he isn't planning anything right now in Harwich, but that's where we have grouped all of the employees from the foreign countries to educate them on that. So I know that he's trying to work something out, but we just haven't come up with a clear date yet.
Thank you.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is just following up on the chief's comment, and there's no action involved, but given what happened at town meeting and that discussion about the SWAT team during the day, as an educational thing, I just want everybody to understand, since I live at the top of that forest, it's really important that on occasion, they are using it at night, because you don't want the police to be discharging a weapon in the dark when the first time they've ever seen the muzzle is the, the time they're using it in real life. So for those people who think that it's a nuisance, it's a really important part of the training to be able to shoot at the range at night, on occasion to be able to be trained fully in that.
Thank you, Don. Julie?
So I, I agree with you, Don, and I, you know, obviously, chief, we're full support of you using it, but back to Larry's point, because same thing, I get a lot of people reaching out to me. So I think as much as we can put it out there that it's being used, and that's what's going on, because, because I, and I'm always amazed at how much I can hear it. So just whatever you can do to get the word out there. Thank you.
You can come over my patio deck.
Chief, do you have the hours?
Yeah, I, I spoke with Mike Ryder, SWAT commander, this afternoon. He said they, they plan on, they're doing a PT test in the morning, and then they're going to come right here, probably around 11:00 AM, and that their training days always wrap up no later than 4:00 PM.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment announcement? Julie, we read the public hearing notice.
Notice of public hearing, town of Harwich Board of Selectmen, application for transfer of liquor license. Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of the general laws, as amended that. Application has been made to this board for a transfer of the seasonal on-premise all-alcoholic beverages license now held by Pleasant Bay Group Incorporated, doing business as Wacoastetin, 2173 Route 28, Harwich, Mass. 02645. Mark J. Nevada, manager, Terrankov Resort Beverage LLC, doing business as Wacoastetin, 2173 Route 28, Harwich, Mass. Alton Keen Lung Chan, manager. On the following described premises located at 2173 Route 28, Harwich, Mass. Resort is comprised of 27 buildings on 27 acres consisting of 120 guest rooms. Main Inn is two-story building with a restaurant and bar on the first floor, along with adjacent outdoor terraces, and second floor with office space and cellar. Outer bar and grill area houses a restaurant and bar which serves and supports an outdoor bar, boardwalk, patio, and adjacent pool. The Board of Selectmen will hold a hearing on the application on Monday, May 16th, 2022, no earlier than 6:30 PM, both in the Griffin Room at Harwich Town Hall, 732 Main Street, Harwich, Mass. 02645. Board of Selectmen, local licensing authority, Cape Cod Times, May 2nd, 2022.
Thank you. Public hearing is open. Alton, did you want to say a few words?
Yes.
Just state your name for the record and who you represent.
Of course. My name is Alton Chan. I'm the general manager at Wacoastet Resort and Golf Club, and I'm just really here to, to answer any questions, if there are any. You know, as, as you all are aware, there has been a transition of ownership at Wacoastet Resort and Golf Club. I've been fortunate to, to be with the property now for my fifth year. So the, the wonderful thing about our new ownership is, is they've kept all the existing team in place, because they understand that that's probably the most important thing about what we do at Wacoastet. Eighty percent of our business comes from local residents who live on the Cape, so we want to obviously continue to do what we do best in a service to the community and the town.
Thank you, Al.
Thank you.
Anyone in the public wish to comment on this transfer?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just for the record, Attorney Dennis Quilty is on the line remotely as well, representing the establishment, if you need him.
Good evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Can you hear me all right?
We can. Just introduce yourself for the record.
Thank you, sir. Dennis Quilty, I'm an attorney. Sorry, I'm bouncing back on here. An attorney representing the applicant before you tonight, and we're pleased to be here. I know you just, you know, Mr. Chan, he's here with us as the proposed manager of record. Also with us representing ownership, Michelle Tenetta and Simon Mays. And as Alton just suggested, this is a, basically a corp-to-corp transfer, no change of location, no change of operations in any way, no change of capacity, hours of op, or anything such as that, just to maintain the existing business in the way that it's been run so successfully by this staff for so many years. So we're happy to answer any questions you might have in this, in this matter. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone in the public wish to comment on this? They get a motion to close the public hearing?
Close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded to close the public hearing. Roll call vote. Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Board member comments or questions? Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I've lived here for 32 years, and I, I real, I'm real familiar with Mark and the staff. If you guys, it was a good move on their part. If the, if you guys continue on with that kind of management continuity, and you run it in the same efficient and first-class way that you've been running it, I don't see any problems at all. There's been no complaints about this, and it's one of the gems of Harwich. So finally was able to convince Mark that he did not live in Chatham, that he was getting his license from us.
Yes, yes, and, and I clarified that with him.
He used that old post office.
Don, don't worry. Mark, Mark still has a house here in Harwich, so.
Well, he used that post office argument on me too many times, and I said, well, it's 20 years now since they moved the post office out to East Harwich.
I said, well, thank you. Thank you for the comments, and again, we feel the same sentiment as well. Thank you.
Julie?
Yeah, I have no comments.
Larry?
No, I agree with Mark, as, you know, been a great resource for the town. To the slide remark Don made, I also like to remind the local media that we, you are located in Harwich, not Chatham, so that's.
I learned that very quickly on my first, my first day on the town, so.
It's such a great resource, so good luck with it.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would just like to welcome the new ownership. Certainly big shoes to fill over there. They've done a great job, and it's a great asset to this community, so thank you, and, and great, good luck. So we will have motion?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that we agree to the transfer as submitted.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve as submitted. Roll call. Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Consent agenda, Julie?
The consent agenda, A, vote to approve for Caleb Chase requests each in the amount of $1,000. Vote to approve the following Board of Selectmen meeting minutes. Number one, December 20th, 2021. Number two, March 28th, 2022.
Moved and seconded. Roll call vote. Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. New business, Cape and Vineyard Electric Co-op, CEVAC representative appointment. Joe, do we have anything on this, or is this just board discussion?
It's board discussion. It's a, excuse me, it's a vacancy that goes back to Mr. Kakounis stepping down after dedicated in years of service. Harwich just needs a representative to serve on behalf of the town.
And they reached out to us to encourage that?
Correct, exactly.
Okay. Mark?
Mark Keller here, West Howard. Sorry to talk so much. There's an emphasis on the state's behalf to, to push heat pumps for your heat, and basically to have us use electricity rather than natural gas. That may work in Boston and Brookline, where most of the lines are underground. Whoever gets appointed to this position, I'd like them to take the message to the State House, that when we have power outages during the winter down here, which I've had for three days and a 99-year-old mother, natural gas is the only way to keep warm. So I hope whoever is appointed will take that message to the state, that this is a different region than Boston. We're not underground. We have prolonged power outages, and natural gas, I know it's a fossil fuel, but natural gas is the only way we can keep warm in many cases during the winter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Don, comments about the appointment?
Yeah, I mean, I spoke with Leo about this when he was stepping down. I think there's some misunderstanding about what CEVAC is. CEVAC was an organization that was basically created by, after discussion from the Mass Selectmen's Association, to try to shield the individual towns from tort claims. And so it was constructed to be something beyond town government, but anybody who's our CEVAC representative is really representing us, not CEVAC. CEVAC itself is a repository for ranges services, wind turbines, photovoltaic cells. They help with a lot of things. It really doesn't have anything to do with what the state wants. It's a construct that's local. My concern is that we find somebody, and I've talked to Leo about this a number of occasions, trying to convince him to stay, but the, whoever it is, because they went through a horrible upheaval at CEVAC, lawsuits, it started to get dysfunctional. We really need to have somebody who fully understands that they're representing the town of Harwich's interests when they go there, because that's why it was created. It wasn't created to be some outside organization. I would love to be able to use this moment as an advertisement to get people to put in, because I think there was some sort of misunderstanding that there was just going to be a lineal line of succession from the Energy Committee to CEVAC, and that's not necessarily the case.
Agreed. Julie?
So to that point, though, I agree with you, Don. Whoever is that person needs to be knowledgeable in, in how to deal. So, you know, whatever we can do to get somebody in with that kind of expertise or background is what we need to do.
Larry?
No, I agree. I think we need to use this forum and others to search for a person who is going to represent Harwich in the most favorable way.
Put, give Ellen another to-do thing for her to-do list, to put it on the, our page.
Well, she is smiling, so that's good.
Joe, any comments?
I had a great meeting several weeks ago with Val Bell about a number of topics, and so there's a lot of great things that we can talk about, and I appreciate the comments that were also made. So we're going to have movement on any number of issues over the next fiscal year. We want to be able to rely upon a representative, so I think it is a key position to fill as soon as we can.
Don, would you just explain the process and how you would apply for that?
Yeah, it's, it's just like every other committee. You pull down the citizens' activity form from the site, or you can get it from the front office, and fill it out. I guess since Val's name was brought up by the town administrator, she did indicate some interest originally, but before she ever interviewed, she went up and spent the day talking to CEVAC, trying to get the lay of the land from what they expected. And that's exactly what I'm saying I'm trying to avoid. I'd like to be able to get a range of candidates, so we have some, Julie's right. I mean, you do need somebody that knows about basically, what energy is, and how it's produced, and what their job is. But all I was saying is I'd like to be able to make a decision based on a range of options, not just one person who just assumed that they were going to get the job.
Joe?
So I, I just want to be able to clarify, and I hope I didn't inadvertently indicate something. My reference to, to Val Bell was not to indicate a preference for the position. What I wanted to indicate is, the board through Selectmen Kavanagh and yourselves have worked actively to update their charge. They're working, and so what I'm trying to indicate is that the committee is active. There are a number of proposals that I think will impact upon our decision-making, excuse me, my, my work and your decision-making for the next fiscal year, so that to support those efforts, we need a CEVAC representative. And I have no objection if the board's considering someone other than a member of the Energy Committees. I think the more we have involved, the better off we'll be.
And I do think historically that that was because Larry Cole had such a expertise on all matters, energy, and, and, right, both of them. So that's where I think that historically has gone that route, but to Don's point, whoever we can get with the most expertise.
I'll double back now that you've doubled back. Just to make everybody aware, I go to church with Val. This is not an indictment of Val and the, it's really about choice and about getting the best representative for us, and it doesn't have to be, as Mr. Powers pointed out, it doesn't have to be somebody who's presently serving on that. It might, it would be nice, but we can only act on the applications. We only got one, and that was months and months and months ago. Larry and I had talked about it, yeah.
Julie, have you talked to the utility committee, Val?
No, I'll have to go to, they meet at 3:00 in the afternoon, and.
Oh.
And I work full-time. So I will follow up and see what I can find out.
More to come.
You need someone to, to meet with the committee or update them?
No.
Okay.
It couldn't, it's not just the committee, anyway.
Understood.
Discussion and possible vote to approve the Recreation Commission's recommendation to adjust beach and parking lot closing times. Proposed times, 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM. We all have a memo in the packet, signed by Eric Beebe, outlining the process that they went through, and saying that the police chief supports it. Any comments from the board? And I'll start with Julie.
So I did get some feedback on, on this, and one of the questions that came up was when people get, you know, fire permits for the beach, and they often don't start their fires, you know, till eight, nine o'clock at night, and now we're saying, you got to be off the beach at 10:00. And I understand the whole rationale here. I, I get that. But, but that is something that people look forward to in the summertime, and pulling a permit to do that through REC. So I guess my question is, are we going to make any exceptions for something like that? I imagine not, and so I just wonder if we need a little more discussion.
I know we got, we have a memo from the REC director, but I'm surprised that he's not here tonight, and, and maybe it's because he wasn't invited, but certainly this topic warrants Eric being here tonight. So I, I'll see where the rest of the board goes with this, but I'm inclined to bring it back and, and have this conversation. Don?
Okay, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I, I'd like to wait, because the, this is not a, a one-off subject for me. I mean, I made the comment with the Conservation Commission. Oftentimes, they hold these hearings, nobody even knows that it's happening, because they don't lead the, read the legal notices. And I note that in his memo, it doesn't say that anybody showed up. It just said that they held a public hearing. I'd like to be able to have that discussion. It's like, does everybody really know? Because Julie's right. Show up at the beach at 9:00, start a fire, and then you say, whoa, 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 whoa. In an hour, you got to be out of here. I mean, we are still reception area, as far as I know. That's where we make most of the money, in most of the businesses during the summer. It would be hard for me to rationalize pulling back on things that people like.
Larry?
No, I agree. I'd like to see a full discussion, because that's one side. I think we've all through the last several months, have gotten emails from the other side worrying about, you know, people partying too much late at night, and speeding down the roads through the beaches and causing dangerous situations for walkers. So there's, there's obviously two sides to it. I don't know which the right answer is, but I do like, we'd want a full discussion.
Chief?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, members of board, did come at chief of police. I was, I attended that. It was a public hearing, held by the Youth and Rec Commission. Bob was there, Bob Nicholson, the, the business owner, Peter, from the inn down on the beach. I don't recall, there may be a handful of other people. And just, just to be clear, you know, we, we've been meeting with Bob and his group for probably a couple of years now, and this is one of the things that came up on the radar screen, screen, that didn't make sense to me, which is the parking lot closes at 10:00 PM, and the sign is down there indicating that. Well, and then there's a call for more enforcement, because there's too much, too many, too much going on, hell raising going on on the beach, right? Well, if, if we write parking tickets for cars in the parking lot at 10:00 PM, and they can actually legally be on the beach at midnight, to me, that's kind of incongruous. I don't know where that would go with a hearing on the parking clerk, but probably not well. I'm just, you know, presenting the, the legal side of it as I look at the differing times. We're not trying to be the fun police by any stretch of the imagination, but again, it's not fun for the neighbors who are experiencing constant noise, and business owners, constant noise, vandalism, you know, a risk of, of setting the dunes ablaze. So this was one of the things that we, you know, we talked about in our meetings, and we brought forward to the REC Commission, because we thought it made more sense. And, and the other issue is, like, I believe I stated at the hearing, if we have a group out on the beach, who's being noisy and disorderly, whatever, you know, other than making arrests, which obviously we really don't want to do for something like that, we have no legal footing to remove them from the beach until midnight, if it, it stays until midnight. So this was some of the reasoning that we, we worked through. So I'm, I'm certainly willing to, you know, have, have a further discussion. I had a feeling it was coming. I know it's a big, it's a two-hour rollback. It's not, in my opinion, the end of the world, and I, I understand what's going on, but we also need the tools to be able to help us do our job when, when the time comes, and we can't at this point legally remove somebody from the beach until midnight, so.
Thank you, chief. I, I attended the public hearing as well, or at least one of them, and if memory serves me correct, there was four, four people that discussed Bank Street Beach, and one that discussed Kahoon out in east, or Flon Pond Drive. This seems to me like a blanket statement, though. It, it's across the board for all the beaches in the town of Harwich, and, and chief, I asked you after the meeting, how do we enforce this? We, we have a, we have a resort to the left as you walk down Bank Street, and then we have the campgrounds to the right, which is a ton of private ownership with two different, two or three different beaches, where they access the beach, and may walk down to the resort, and the resort may walk down to Bank Street. And as much as I appreciate that, you know, we're not going to go looking for a problem, but if there's a problem, this gives the tools to take care of the problem. But the only complaints I've heard about Bank Street Beach, and I didn't hear anything about Red River Beach, or Pleasant Road Beach, or any of those other beaches, and quite frankly, my opinion is, we're inviting people to come to our town. We print magazines about our town through the Chamber of Commerce, and we promote the sunny side of Harwich. But it seems to me that we're being presented often, come to Harwich, but don't make any noise, and you can't enjoy our beaches now after 10:00 at night. And, and I've heard from a lot of people that wouldn't attend that public hearing, and wouldn't attend that meeting, and don't live there, by the way, so certainly not advocating destruction of people's property. But our beaches are why people come here. And, and 10:00 at night, okay, I'm in bed at 10:00 normally. I could go along with that. But we're inviting an awful lot of people to use it. I will tell you that I get up at 4:00 often to go surf cast on several of our beaches, and I know the Harwich Police Department's not going to give me a problem for surf casting, but this board's being asked to shut its beaches down, with no exceptions, for one beach that seems like that there's a problem with vandalism. And we just, we just had this with Bell's Neck Hunting. You know, it's a, it's a solution looking for a problem, other than a few isolated instances. And, and I need to, I guess, hear from Eric Beebe, and, and what work's been done, and I'd like to be presented with a little more information, like what are other towns doing now? Dennis is the extreme, so that was the example that was used in the public hearing, but no other, no others were used in that public hearing, that I can remember. So I, I'm going to ask Eric to come back before us, and probably the chair, or have a joint, joint meeting with REC. meeting with REC, but this seems like a blank statement for all of Harwich Town beaches. And the 6:00 a.m. thing, I'm not sure that the criminals are up at 6:00, and they're certainly not burning people's beach chairs at 6:00 a.m. in the morning and having rowdy parties.
You'd probably be surprised.
The burning of the chairs or other things?
If they're up at 6:00.
All right. With that, Bob, do you care to speak? And anyone else?
Yeah, Bob Nickerson, Harwich Port. When we proposed some of these changes, we thought you could do individual beaches. And the problem is, I'm a landowner on that strip that are private beaches and all these other people are, and there are fires on our beaches. And it is, you know, we can't be policing these fires, but it's dangerous. If it's salt wind, we have dry conditions, they could come right up, right up the bluff, take out a house before you even turn around. But you really need to talk to Peter who's at the, in on the beach because he is right there. He has guests that won't walk on the beach because they're having bonfires, swearing at people. I mean, really, really disruptive. I haven't seen it because I don't go down there. I'm not going to get into that. I don't want to get into that situation, but it's not an easy situation. So the idea was if we could get the times synced in where, like the chief said, they could go down and say, okay, so if you say, okay, we don't do it, we don't want to switch them to 10:00, maybe we go to 11:00 for both. But, you know, and one of the comments from even the REC guy was, well, I want to walk down the beach. I don't care if anyone walks down the beach. It's not, that's not the problem. The problem is these guys taking pallets, putting them behind, and this is what Peter's seen, behind the restrooms, coming in later at night, breaking them up, going down and have a fire. Now, one of the things when you ask Eric to come back, ask him to explain what the fire permit really allows them to do. It's not to have a bonfire. It is a contained charcoal-type fire. It has to be in a unit, and they have to clean it up. It was clearly discussed in our meeting when he had. So it's not what these guys are doing, and it's not the guys going down and the families going down and cooking burgers at 10:30 at night if they're that late. It's the rowdiness, it's the drugs going on, that's what we're concerned about, and them coming down the road fast. They come into the parking lot, they circle around, they take off. So that's what we're trying to contain. We're not trying to contain people that, let's take a walk, honey, and go down the beach. So that's, I don't know how we do it, Michael, it's really, it's really hard.
Thank you, Bob. And Joe, I think that's something, I'm not sure if the DPW director's been put into this, but there's speed bumps in areas in the campgrounds in Harwich Port that will take the bottom of your truck off if you go more than five miles an hour, and I'm not sure if those things are put down in the summer months and taken out after the summer. And Bob, I certainly have witnessed cars speeding in and out of that parking lot, so that I get, but that's a separate issue, and the fire permit would be the fire chief. What do they issue the fire permits for? How do they issue them? What do they pay? What are the controls? And that's the information that I'm missing. And Bob, I think if there's a problem at Bank Street Beach, now Peter, the gentleman that you talked about, I'm wondering if he realizes that means his guests can't walk on the beach. Right now, they don't want to, but with this, they were not going to be able to.
But one thing is, the public beach is very narrow, right? 200 feet, maybe, 250 feet. From there to the jetty till you get to Merkel Beach is private. The other way, it's private until we get to, I don't know what's the first small beach in the campgrounds offhand, but it's a ways.
But, Bob, not to interrupt you, but we just went through this with Little Beach. You can't tell people they can't walk along the edge of the water. They can't walk on the beach, but that's not private. You can, you can walk on the edge of the water.
You can walk on the edge of the water at low tide.
Not necessarily low tide, and believe it or not, there's a survey.
I own, I own, we spent thousands of dollars to fight this. We own to the low watermark because of historic laws.
And I would only tell you.
And we're in all, and none of us want to stop that. That's what I'm getting at, Michael. That's not the idea here.
All right, well, I'm just saying, on the, on the other side, heading to the campgrounds, those are all surveyed lots, and we went through this with many lawsuits on Beach 22, and the low tide mark on where the surveys were is quite different than what the actual low tide mark is. Doesn't relate to just low tide. There's an actual survey to those lots.
Well, I know, we had to go to the land court and get our survey updated, so I'm very familiar with that.
All right, well, we will bring this back, and I do hear the concerns. Don?
Yeah, when you do bring it back, we do bring it back, I just want to say a couple of things. For a long time on the side, I was teaching driver's ed. I had at least one kid that I know of who got his license, and the next month, he was on Red River Beach, and he planted the nose of his car in a sand dune. If you think that just closing the beach at 10:00 is going to stop that kind of nonsense, I think you're dreaming. We don't have the police to be able to police this. We've asked them to pay special attention to the pouring establishments. There are plenty of other problems that are going on during the period, and I know from my own experience, the Cranberry Festival used to have the beach weekend, and there was a bonfire. It was not a barbecue grill. There's a long history of people doing open fires there. What I'd be interested in, in data, is when it come back, how many police calls have there been over a period of time, and how many fire calls have there been? Saying they could cause a fire is not the same as saying there have been three incidences already over the past two years. So I would love to hear some tangible evidence that this is an egregious problem that needs to be addressed.
So I think that, you know, there's a couple of things going on to me in all of this is that if you're doing a fire on the beach, you have to have a permit from, through the REC department. You leave a deposit. There's a whole process, and it's the REC that issues the permit. So my, my question is, who's, who's breaking up pallets and having a fire? That's not what you're supposed to do, and you're responsible for, but to that point, if that is going on, that's illegal. You're not supposed to do that. So the police could address that issue. Granted, Chief, I know you have enough on your hands in the summer. I'm not trying to make it worse, but I am saying there is a process, there is a permit. People's names are, you know, on those permits, and when you go, if there's an issue, you say, where's your permit? Your permit's supposed to be in your vehicle, you're supposed to be able to show it. It's not supposed to be a massive fire. It's technically cook fire, I believe is how they put it on the permit, and you've got a deposit, so you have to clean it up and bury the coals and all that. So if somebody's doing something other than that, there is a process where you could say, this is an illegal fire, shut it down and get off the beach.
One quick comment, if I may, I would ask you to talk to the fire chief because Eric did, and he said, and I'm not sure it's 100% right, because I need to check, is that there's no open fires allowed anywhere in the town like that. So, and like I said, I'm not trying to shut down people having fun. It's, it's the rowdies drinking heavily and being way over top, and I certainly don't want these guys tasked with another big thing. So we were just trying to get some signage. We can't see the sign that even the parking lot is closed at 10:00, put a big sign up. Maybe less people will stay there, or 11:00, or, well, that's what it is, 10:00. You know, I'm not trying to make it where people aren't going to the beach at all. We're just trying to make sure it's safe and not having problems with Eric, I mean, with Peter telling us about, one of his guests wanted to come over, the guy was a bodybuilder, he was going to get out there, and Peter goes and then confronts the guy, and the guy swore at him. I mean, that's not what we want either, and he's trying to start a business. He's only been there a year and a half.
I think there's plenty of area to fix some things. So Bob, I think, right, and then the parking lot closing at 10:00, beach closing at 12:00, we're not giving any consistency to, but, and Joe, I think there's several things that I just heard that are unrelated in my mind to REC, which, one is speeding, and the police chief, I'm sure, just took notice, and Harwich Center seemed to work when we did Harwich Center. But speed bump possibly on that, going into that parking lot, and then at the public hearing, signage was a big comment. There is no signage. Same with Kahoon's, they said all the signs had been stolen, so maybe some conversation with REC and Link just to get new signs up would be a good start. And then I'm going to put this back on if I can get everybody together for next week. If I can, it'll be two weeks. I won't, I won't wait a month, the summer's coming, so.
Mr. Chairman, if I could respond. First, I agree with what you heard. What I'd like to do is get the board's understanding that we can bring this back in two weeks because what I'd like to do is meet with all those departments, as you mentioned, and make sure that we, the town has a comprehensive response to all of this because of all the ancillary issues that have, that relate to the beach and the beach usage, but as you've heard, if there are pallets behind public buildings and we're aware of those, we will, I was going to say abscond, that's not the right word, but take them, thank you, remove them so that, you know, there's any number of things that the town can do, so I'll convene a meeting of all the appropriate departments to make sure we're all on the same page, and then we can come back and report out to you in two weeks.
Thank you. Julie, can I get a motion on C? A move to approve?
On C, move to approve the transient vendor license for underlay on wheels, business address 137 Azalea Drive, Harwich, mobile food truck will travel for events in Park on private property.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion. All those, we'll do roll call vote. Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Would take one on D?
Okay. Discussion impossible vote to approve an event permit for port summer nights hosted by the Harwich Chamber of Commerce, Wednesday nights in July and August from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. to include live and/or recorded music with amplification located at various businesses in Harwich Port.
And that was a move to approve, right?
Sorry, I moved to approve.
Okay. Move to approve and seconded and as presented, discussion. Don?
Yeah, I just want to say hallelujah. COVID's taken so much away from this town for so many years now, and that was something that the year right before COVID with these hours was just unbelievable. I mean, you couldn't even move around in Harwich Port, there were so many people. Thank you for trying to bring this back.
Okay, move, seconded, no further discussion, roll call vote. Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Julie, can I get a move to approve on E?
Move to approve road race and one-day entertainment permit application for the Harwich Road Race hosted by the Harwich Chamber of Commerce, June 25, 2022. Music to be held outside at Harwich Chamber and Mad Minno Baron Kitchen, 12:00 p.m. to 2:00 p.m., recorded or live music with amplification. Road race starts and ends at One Schoolhouse Road.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Roll call, Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. With that, Cindy, would you like to get up and do, say something about these two great events or a series of great events? You heard what Don said, and certainly we all appreciate, but here's your time to sell it.
Well, thank you. Excited to bring back, of course, the Wednesday nights, and we chose that 5 to 8 because it really worked. We, of course, hire two police details to keep everyone safe and also carry the liability insurance for this event. Excited to have a lot of new pass bans that have been here during this for about 20-plus years, so it all kicks off July 6th and runs until August 31st. Regarding the road race, this is our charitable foundation puts this road race on, and all the funds that we raise go towards, one, taking care of paying the race company to help us put it on, but also the scholarships that we provide to both Monomoy and Cape Tech, and then grants that are available for the health and wellness groups of the Harwich youth. So looking forward to bringing both those back again next month. If you'd like to run, please contact me. If you'd like to be a sponsor, please contact me. What else can I say?
Does it look like I want to run?
You can walk, too. Actually, it's a 5K walk and run.
That was my question. I could be separated from my money, but I'm not running unless I'm being chased.
So you can walk and you won't be chased, I promise. Thank you.
And just a comment on one thing you said, Cindy. This is specific to the locations that you pick every week.
Yes.
This does not give a blanket entertainment license for Harwich.
No, so I am very, very careful and cautious of where I place the bans. We have some, once again, Pilgrim Congregational is going to be back doing their hot dogs and hamburgers on Wednesday nights, and they are a great venue for us centrally, so I put specific kinds of bans there. A lot goes into it. So yes, I am very, very specific of where I place them. We're actually using Dome Park this year, so yes, very, very cautious.
Thank you. And anyone else that wants to add to this would need to apply for their own license and come before this board.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Can I get a motion on F?
I move to approve new 2022 seasonal common victuals license, Sacquet Tucket Snack Shack LLC, doing business as Dockside, 715A Route 28, pending building department approval.
I'll second it for discussion. Don?
Yeah, I note that our packet and the application has the building commissioner's signature on it.
Actually, and tonight before this meeting, I believe I was told that we got all of those pieces that were just read into the motion today, so.
Can we take that part out of the motion and just?
Yeah, then I said.
We did not know that until tonight, though.
Okay.
So, so that's part of your, part of my second, that she took that piece out.
Terrific.
Okay, any further discussion? Roll call?
I just want to, I just want to bring it to everyone's attention that we're talking about the snack shack at Sacquet Tucket, and that will be open and functioning fully this coming season because we had hiccups in the past, so just so the public is aware.
Thank you.
Memorial Day's coming up.
I'm ready.
I'm ready, too.
Okay, roll call vote. Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. And before we read G, did we get the pendings on that? We got the pendings on that, so you can leave that out of the motion as well.
So I move to approve a new 2022 seasonal common victuals license, Ashwood Food Services, Inc., doing business as Jakes at Cranberry Valley, 183 Oak Street.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
No.
Roll call, Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Update by town administrator on Barnstable County proposed budget for fiscal year 2023. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Unfortunately, you'll see in the packet, last week I came across an article online that talked about the Assembly of Delegates working on the county budget, and there's obviously a lot going on at the county level, but the net effect of this is the Assembly of Delegates is looking to cut several line items in the proposed county commissioner's budget, and one of those areas relates to information technology. As you may recall, one of the line items I talked about at our town meeting on May 2nd was that the town was going to continue our partnership with the Barnstable County IT Department in addition to filling the position that was recently vacated, and so we have great plans to continue that the work the county has done this year. Those plans will come to a screeching halt if the Assembly of Delegates budget cuts go forward as proposed. This evening, so today being May 16th, and then tomorrow, May 17th, there is a budget reconciliation committee composed of Commissioner Lyons and four members from the delegate, the Assembly of Delegates. None of the members from the Assembly of Delegates are connected to Harwich, none of them are connected to Bourne, the two towns that would lose tremendously if these cuts go forward. That was the first part of the update. I know that our Assembly of Delegates representative, Elizabeth Harder, has indicated her willingness to support the IT. Unfortunately, there was a call this afternoon that began at 4:30 that was still going on at 5:30 when I left for your meeting, and I didn't hear a lot of positive information. So I wanted to make sure that we had this update, that you have this information. I know board members generally have been in contact with our delegate, incredibly disappointed in what's going on at the county level. I'm fully conversant in government. I know that the Assembly of Delegates is our legislative version, if you will. The commissioners are the executive branch, but they really need to figure their stuff out because these cuts are going to decimate the work that we're looking to do in Harwich, the work that we're looking to continue, and work, by the way, that we're prepared to fund. So it is a revenue source for the county, but, and again, the town of Bourne is similarly going to be impacted. Essentially, the Assembly is looking to remove two IT positions that are being brought in because of all the new work that Barnstable County IT is looking to do. Again, very unfortunate situation. I hope to call into the reconciliation meeting again tomorrow, but my, my request of the[1757.06] again tomorrow. But my, my request of the board, again, this is an update, there's no action. But I would urge you as elected officials to reach out to your counterparts in the county. Because whatever's going on between those two bodies, there's a lot of unintended consequences that are going to wreak a lot of havoc.
Thank you, Joe. Don?
Yeah, I might note that this has been a years-long conversation. Every time the county comes in, they always talk about, you know, we've got services that you can subscribe to, so you don't have to be redundant with everything. And action like this kind of makes you cautious about ever getting engaged in a common endeavor again, because you don't know how long they're going to be partners.
Julie?
No, I agree. And, you know, we talk about regional approaches and money saving and all of that. And then all of a sudden, you hear this. And it's, it's kind of outrageous. I mean, I understand they're looking at their budgets carefully, but they're getting, to Joe's point, they're getting paid for, for the services, so.
Fair amount.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Good amount.
Yeah, I just learned about this Friday morning, and did reach out to our delegate, said she would support it. But she's now part of the reconciliation team right now, which is a bit of a handicap. Clarify for me the meaning of the two-year contract, if they can bail out in year one.
So what we have is a, is an intermunicipal agreement that is actually set to end at the end of this year. Finance Director Carol Capola.
End of this fiscal year or end of the county?
I know, end of this fiscal year. And that's why we sought the appropriation that we got to continue on. You know, it's, it's an intermunicipal agreement, so it's an agreement between the county and the town. And I'm sure they're going to indicate, you know, subject to appropriation, as we would do on our end. But it, it's just no way to operate because we had no information whatsoever that this was something that was ongoing. Had we heard about this, we might have been able to do something at town meeting differently, perhaps. It's just, it's, it's not a good way to operate.
No, and I fully agree with the others that they've been asking for regional solutions to town problems and offering to help the towns. And we actually are taking advantage of them, and then they're bailing out. So it's just unacceptable from, from our perspective.
Thank you. I see our representative is online. Elizabeth?
Hi, Elizabeth Harder, I'm online, if you'd like me to comment or ask me any questions.
Go ahead and comment, Elizabeth, if you would.
The, you know, me, it's hard for me to be nice. I can assure you that we are working on the tech staffing problems. While I was not on the reconciliation committee, I am on the broadband and tech committee. So I'm assuming we'll be having a meeting of that committee shortly. And just keep in mind that the delegates, even me and Bourne combined, do not have enough votes to override the rest of the assembly. But, but once, once we pass our budget, we will, we will be working on how to fix this. So don't panic just yet.
Thank you. Any questions for Elizabeth from the board? Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Joe, next one is you as well. Update from the town administrator on Barnstable County American Rescue Plan Act funds.
So a little bit of good news emanating from Barnstable County. And that is, as we've talked about before, Barnstable County's ARPA portal was expected to go live last week. As I wrote last week, it did. So where we're at now is, the way that the Assembly of Delegates and the county commissioners have left it, is they've set aside $10 million for all of the towns on Cape Cod. And each town has its allocation set aside. So of the $10 million, Harwich has a set aside of $616,255.31. Now, that allocation set aside from the county is above and beyond the 1.2 million, half of which we received last June, the second half, the second tranche we're getting next month. And as you recall, you folks have already voted to expend the town's ARPA funds, as we talked about several months ago. So we, we staff, meaning Water, Wastewater Superintendent Dan Palatier and I have been working, because you'll see in the memorandum, that for whatever reason, the county decided to narrow the view of the portal, if you will. You can see the four bullet point items that are there. What's missing is the, the one item that Harwich relied upon for our own ARPA funds, and that was revenue replacement, AKA for general government services. So I know our colleagues in Brewster are struggling, because where we have a number of infrastructure issues and projects that we can certainly conceive of, they don't. But the order that you see the bullet points is the order of, generally that we, we think we might have success. So the four areas are water and sewer infrastructure, broadband infrastructure, sorry, my Boston accent came out there, addressing negative economic impacts. And they indicate that some of the eligible uses would pertain to housing, and then supporting public health response as it relates to the pandemic. Bob Lawton presided over the Cape and Islands Managers Meeting last Thursday. We had a discussion about that. Some of my colleagues have urged all of us to be careful as we proceed, because even though the county says these are acceptable uses, in the end, it will be the federal auditors that will say whether or not it was appropriate. Now, having said that, I think we have some very helpful projects that we can, that we think we can pursue. So at some point, Mr. Chairman, later this month, we'd have the Water Sew, excuse me, Water Wastewater Superintendent identifying some uses that we think will be eligible. Originally, when the county talked about the portal, they talked about trying to get in first and foremost, but that was when it was understood to be a bucket of money, if you will. We do have some time to, to really be thoughtful about this process. Having said that, I still expect that Harwich could be an applicant in the portal process before the end of this fiscal year. And so again, some good news about that. As, as a secondary, because this information came in after I wrote the memorandum, the county is still discussing the full 41 million that they've received on behalf of the Cape and Islands. They've set aside 10 million. The question is, there's another 10 million, so totaling 20 million, that I would certainly make the argument is funds that were meant to be for municipalities. The commission and the county have not determined that additional 10 million. So what we know right now is that there's 10 million available, and of the 10 million, 616,000 plus is a set aside for Harwich.
Joe, what was the formula they used to get to the 600 for Harwich versus other towns?
I think generally speaking, it was more along the lines of proportional representation, for lack of a better word.
Thank you. Don, any questions or comments?
No, thank you.
Julie?
We have till 2026, right? Is that the date?
Correct. These are funds that would have to be expended by December 31, 2026. And so that's why I don't feel pressured that I did originally to get moving. Having said that, we've got a bunch of projects lined up where I think Dan and I feel comfortable that we can absolutely have a project or projects where we can rely upon these funds. But we, we already are not the first applicant, nor do I ever want to be. I always like others to do tested, and then I can do my beta testing on them. But I think, like I said, we can get something done within a few months, for sure.
Larry?
And to just clarify, we're, the county's still debating exactly how the funds are going to be sourced out.
For the second tranche of the, of the additional 10 million of the overall 41-plus million. It's generally understood that this money, this 10 million, is, is established for those purposes. There are two internal auditing procedures that will go on at the county. So as a, as an administrator, my colleagues in administration and management are cautiously optimistic that that auditing process that the county has set up will help us survive federal audit in the future.
And what's your guess? They'll, they'll continue by population rather than to?
Yeah. My understanding is it's been pretty well debated, in that they feel that any allocation set aside for the town will be in the manner as they've done it so far.
All set, Larry?
Yeah.
I have nothing. Town administrator's report.
I debated whether I was going to talk about this tonight or next week, but I think I'd like to do it tonight, as the board I made aware. I will be celebrating three years in the town of Harwich on Friday, the 20th. I'm absolutely thrilled to be able to say that. And I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank this board, prior boards, and the residents. And that's coming from someone who has been here for three years, endured a tornado, pandemics, outdoor town meetings, and all, all the like. I yet still very much enjoy the job and enjoy working for you folks. So I wanted to wish myself a happy anniversary.
Happy anniversary.
Thank you very much.
Any other report? Selectman's report, Don?
Yeah, I just want to say that we never experienced any of those problems until you showed up. The zombies would be next.
I think my kids would say zing.
Yeah. Yeah, I just wanted to point out, because people watch the meetings, that tomorrow's election day in this town, in addition to voting for different candidates, and I still feel that this is the most important election that you can vote in, the local one, because it affects you. We have ballot questions, too. And despite what happened at town meeting, we need a positive vote on the road maintenance program in order for us to be able to move forward with that. And there's matching funds from the states. So if, if you're inclined, you know, to vote, please do. There's also a charter amendment, and because we elected, have a home rule charter process, it does not go to the legislature. We pass it at a town meeting, and the following year, it goes to the ballot box. It does not become effective until that occurs. So it's been voted in a positive way last year. It's on the ballot this year. I urge you to go out and vote.
Thank you, Don. Julie?
I just want to congratulate the Cape Chatter Lighthouse School, because I, I attended the Butterflies of Brundabar last week. And it was an unbelievable presentation by the kids. They revealed a mural. I mean, it was really moving. So I just want to applaud them and let them know that we're going to be doing a proclamation to acknowledge their accomplishments.
Julie, you're going to write that proclamation?
Ellen has done a fantastic job in helping me with this, so I think that we'll be good.
Thank you. Larry?
We passed a town meeting, the amended Montemoy School Agreement, and Chatham passed that Saturday. And so we're moving forward, and our wish to better equalize funding for the elementary schools. So we'll congratulate ourselves. Very, very, very good that Chatham is also online.
Yes. Great news.
Appreciate it.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call. Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.